Good evening. Welcome. Call to order, the meeting for Monday, February 10th, 2020. All rise and salute the flag.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Roll call, please.
Roll call of the members, Councilor Janino.
Here.
Here, Councilor Guanasso.
Here.
Here, Councilor McKenna.
Here.
Here, Councilor Moravito.
Here.
Here, Councilor Novoselfsky.
Here.
Here, Councilor Powers.
Here.
Here, Councilor Rotundo.
Present.
Here, Councilor Serino.
Here.
Here, Councilor Viscanti.
Here.
Here, Councilor Zambudo.
Here.
Here, and Council President Keith.
Here.
Here, Quorum, is present. Calendar item number two, approval of the Journal of the Regular Meeting of January 27th, 2020.
So ordered.
Calendar item number three, the City Council will unveil a memorial plaque in the City Council Chamber in honor of Rick Promise of Revere TV, who passed on November 21st, 2019. Rick was well-known as the voice behind before the council.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Before we unveil this presentation, I would like to offer any of the councils, if they wish to speak, or say any kind words about Rick Promise that they may not have already mentioned, and if not, we can also, we can move over to the side and do this wonderful unveiling. Council Novoselfsky?
Thank you, Ms. President. Ms. President, big loss. Great remembrance of him and everything he's done, he did for Revere TV, for all the events that he went to, even in the condition he was existing towards the end. He did the best he could and even went beyond the call of duty sometimes and with very large difficulty. And I'm glad I put this motion in for this to happen and I know Bob Dunbar and his staff and everybody at Revere TV misses him. We miss him. We miss him on, before the council and we just, we'll hopefully, with this plaque, we'll be able to remember him forever. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Guanasso.
Thank you, Mr. President. Certainly, I was just speaking with Rob Dunbar a minute ago and part of the traits of Rick were, he kept a lot of things private and he was just a first-class gentleman, always had a nice smile. Obviously, he had a nice voice for TV when he read the agenda, but he kept to himself about his wife's health. He didn't want to prey on and say, you know, poor me, poor me syndrome. He didn't want that at all because obviously he knew he was suffering a bit and he never alluded to any ailments that he might have had, but on that last evening that he was here, I knew firsthand something drastically was wrong and I knew that he was really struggling. Again, he tried to make the effort to go up into the room to record our meetings and he didn't complain. And this guy couldn't even walk to the stairs, I mean, and did not complain one bit. He was talking about other things in very light conversation, as it usually was. But again, he will go down as a terrific servant to the people of Revere. Revere TV will certainly, certainly miss his efforts because he put his full dedication in. And Rob was just telling me that he had so much sick time accrued, he never used it. He never used his sick time. He just went in and did his job without any notoriety. He just, you know, he represents good people and that's what he was. And we will honor him this evening and I think this is the perfect chamber to recognize him with. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Zambudo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Rick Promise was a, not only was he a fantastic employee and dedicated to Revere TV, he lived it, he breathed it. I mean, he was just unbelievable and he would hound you when the, when the videos were due if you were, or to come in and do your video or whatever, and he was always on top of things and very conscientious. But more than that, Rick Promise was just a wonderful human being. He was a very, he was a Christian man, a very religious guy and we used to share stories about, excuse me, about readings in the church and so forth and not to get into those details, but he was just a, my colleague talked about how he never, never complained about his wife's situation and how hard that was on him and I can't think of a finer gentleman and I truly miss him and I'm glad we're honoring him tonight. He truly deserves it because this was his home, it really was. I mean, he was always here, you know, forget the remotes, but he, you know, I've been here 20 years and didn't miss, Rick was here every time I came in, you know. It's just truly a wonderful gentleman. I'm going to miss him terribly and it's a great loss to the city, to Revere TV and to all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Viscanti.
I think the one word missing was, he was a gentleman.
Absolutely.
You know, and I know the senior citizen, the senior senator is going to miss him because he was always there as well and what a great motion, really. It's well-deserved and I'm fortunate to have known him and this couldn't be done to a better man. He was a, it's going to be sadly missed. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Powers.
Thank you, Mr. President. I can say with a degree of certainty that cable TV in the city of Revere would have not been as professionalized and that's not saying anything about anyone, but he went over and above board. If you went down there to do a video during election year, he went out of his way to help you. At the meetings here, same thing, out of his way to help you. You'd see him and as Councilor Zambudo alluded to, you would see him every Sunday morning at the 8:30 mass at a Mac of Conception, also a member of the Knights of Columbus. Somebody who really took a sincere interest in the city of Revere and the city he lived in and he'll be sorely missed by not only us up here, but I'm sure by so many that came in contact with him over the years. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Council Serino.
First, I want to express my condolences to Bob Dunbar and to the Revere TV family. Rick's loss is definitely a huge loss for the community, but I know for you guys, it was especially tough. And what a, you know, what a great way to remember him with this plaque tonight, but Councilor Zambudo and Council Powers pretty much stole the words out of my mouth that in addition to being a community guy, he was a man of deep faith and I got to know him a few years back in the Knights of Columbus and I remember having dinner one night at De Mano's with him and we just had a conversation and that conversation I'll remember forever with him. He was just a good and faithful man. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Council McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to say that Rick was one of my constituents and I remember the last night he was here, he was in pain, he couldn't even walk and Councilor Janino and I was telling him to go home and he said, nope, we've got to run the show tonight. And he tried to make it up those stairs, but he couldn't. He was very dedicated to his job in the city of Revere, but I got to say one thing, that every time, he was my constituent, every time I made a motion to better his neighborhood, he would always come up and personally thank me and say, thank you so much for caring about the neighborhood. So I'm going to really miss him and I'm going to miss that. He was such a gentleman and I would just like to say thank you. And I know Revere TV has lost two people this year, Morris Morris and Rick Promise, and huge losses to the city and I just want to say I'm sorry and I want to say thank you to the both of them for giving so much of themselves to the city of Revere.
Thank you, Councilor. Council Moravito.
Thank you. I'm going to share a story. So, my first time behind the camera, when I ran for office against my colleague over here to my left, here I am looking at the camera and I'm giving this very heartfelt statement and I'm talking about my third-grade teacher and all of a sudden, ha, 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 he starts laughing hysterically, uncontrollably, but it wasn't because, he wasn't laughing because, at me, he was laughing because he was touched by my statement. And we were friends ever since then. I would always bring it up to him and he felt so bad because I would tease him about it, but the truth about Rick Promise is, he was a kind-hearted man. No one, a lot of people never seen him because he was the man behind the camera, but don't let that mistake all the work that he did and how involved he was in the community. He was at every event, he was so involved in our community, private organizations, religious groups, and the reason why no one's seen him is because he was just so enthralled with taking the video and so everyone in Revere could be part of the event or be part of whatever he was filming that day. And he made sure whatever he was doing, it was the best. So, he will be missed, quiet guy, but when you, when you talk to him, boy, he won't stop talking. But my heart and prayers go out to his family, so he will be missed.
Thank you, Councilor. Council Janino.
Thank you, Mr. President. I know a lot of my colleagues have already said some of the things that I wanted to express, but it's, it's a void in this council chamber. It's one of those things where every Monday before the meeting, we talk to him or at every community event, you'd see him and he's going to be sorely missed by all of us because of that presence and because his way of always being there, but as my colleague mentioned, behind the scenes and on the sidelines and as a supporting role, he was incredibly kind and sweet and we were talking before the meeting and saying how there's no sound tonight and the irony of the difficulty that we're having with the sound and it's almost his way of saying, you know, it's not about me, I don't want to talk about me because he was such a kind person that did things as a labor of love and he really loved his job and did his job well. So he'll be sorely missed here and my heartfelt condolences go out to Revere TV and to his family that are here, so thank you.
Thank you. And before we get up to remove the drape, I would just want to mention, yeah, Rick was a consummate professional and like you mentioned, I know that some people probably can't hear us tonight. If you can, switch to 1071 on the HD channel, you'll be able to listen to us, but I think that's a sign from Rick, like I said, my brother Knight, but what I'd like to do is ask the Council Vice President Novoselfsky and the members from the Revere TV community if they could, would so kindly get up and help unveil this plaque. or?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yep, so just for the edification, we'll do a full picture at the summation of the meeting. Thank you.
Calendar item number four, Comcast, National Grid, Verizon and RCN will meet to discuss utility-related issues such as double poles, trench work and wiring.
Representatives from, I see National Grid, I see Verizon, Comcast, all right. RCN, funny they're not here tonight. Rats.
Mr. President, I think that everybody has received a copy of the report that was generated last week and will be glad to take whatever questions you may have. One issue that has come up is the, there's municipal fiber or wire that needs to be identified and they're holding up 37 poles. Like to be able to contact a working group, whether it's police, school or IT, and sit down and try to figure out, you know, who has that responsibility and have it addressed.
Thank you. I know a few councils wishing to speak. Council McKenna tonight.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I'd like to ask you, I've called you four times in the last six months to get a wire fixed on Crest and Bateman and you said you'd get to it and it's still hanging, it's hanging low. Four times I talked to you personally and you said you would get it done.
It may be Comcast wire and that's on Crest.
Crest and Bateman Road. So I've talked to Comcast personally.
Okay.
And they went around to every pole that I have. I have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 11, 12 poles with wires hanging. Then I, they checked every pole because they're mostly on Winthrop Ave, Creston Ave and Decatur Ave and they said that they were Verizon telephone wires.
Could you send me that list?
I can send you that list. Will anything happen with that list because this has been going on now?
If you send it to me in an email, it would be best.
Okay. Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilor. Council Powers.
Thank you, Mr. President. My questions, statements are directed more at Engrid and these are a couple of things that I feel are very serious and need to be addressed. The first is the, in the Ponsett Street Mini Park, on the Ponsett Street, probably across from, you know, 31 Napont in that area down there, there's a pole that carries an emergency light for the park and that's been out for a couple of weeks now. It's not a regular street light, it's an emergency light and years ago down there, there was a fatality, someone got stabbed or, and I'm going back, you know, back 25 years ago, but I think that is all the more reason why that park should be lit at night and Engrid should make it a mission to go and replace that light. It's one of those square boxes with the lighting inside it. The other one is a pole that's, it's ready to fall over. It's on Woodland Road, down at the, down at the end on the right-hand side. It's probably in the area of 70 or 80 Woodland Road. Anyone goes down there, they're not going to miss it because it's very dangerous looking. And the other comment I have is at 460 Revere Street, there was a pole put in there and I don't know if the pole belongs to Verizon or Engrid or who, but to me it appears to be, there's a cable support coming off the pole which is going into the sidewalk. It appears to me to be making it impossible and I haven't measured it, but I think it's incumbent upon the utilities to go out and measure it and make sure that that area is handicapped accessible so someone in a wheelchair can get by that pole without, you know, without going out on Revere Street, which you know is very busy. And those are my concerns, those are my three major concerns and I would hope that the next time we get together up here that those concerns would be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Council Rotundo.
Thank you, to actually all of you. Please accept my apologies for my directness, but I would like the list of all your condemned poles within the city and I'd like to forward it to the city solicitor. I asked for that about a year and a half ago and I'm still waiting for that and quite frankly, there are a lot of double poles in the city that need to be dealt with as well. So, that's my main issue and again, I'm asking for what I asked for about a year and a half ago and did not get it.
Again, it's a list of condemned poles?
Yep. You have to keep a record of it, correct?
Yes, we do, but...
How many would you figure on the city of Revere right now?
It's a very dynamic list and we're always working on condemned poles.
Less than 30, more than 50?
I have no idea.
That's fair. Okay. Could you get, could all three of you get whatever poles that you have within the city that are condemned and forward that to the city of Revere, please? That way we can keep a track on what you're, what you're doing to ensure that it's getting done. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Council Serino.
Thank you, guys, for being here tonight. So, I'm new to this, but I spent a good, good portion of my weekend going through every street in my ward and I compiled a list of double poles and poles that have wires on them. You know, double poles tend to, you know, we kind of ignore them because they've just become so regular in the city, but I was shocked that I have 45 double poles in my ward alone. You know, some of those seem very dangerous, near the Whalen School, near De Salvo Park, where kids are playing, one at Hall's Corner, which is one of the busiest intersections in my ward. So the double poles are definitely a major issue and I, on the list which I'll give you, I kind of starred the ones that I felt may have been, you know, the most concerning. But then I also, so there are like 11 poles within the ward that have wires just wrapped around them, mostly in the Malden Street area, either on Malden Street or in some of the streets off Malden Street. So if you guys could take a look into that, I'll give you this. But I did have some specific issues constituents wanted me to bring up and I think they're mostly for Dan, if you wouldn't mind. So pole number 3420 at 52 Sherman Street, there's a wire in a rusted, half-open protector that appears to be helping to support the pole. It's not a double pole, but it's one of those, you know, supporters. Can you guys go out there and inspect the integrity of that pole because there's a young family that lives there and the mom is concerned that, you know, the child could get cut or, you know, fall over or whatnot.
Council, is there something you can?
Oh, sure, yeah. I can send you.
Sure, I'll write it down.
One other thing, LED lights on Steeple Street and a couple of other streets in the ward. I know you guys are switching over to LEDs, but on Steeple Street, a couple people said that you've only done it, you know, maybe sporadically throughout. Is there a reason why, like a total street, isn't being done at one time?
Yes, we've been, we actually spoke about this at the, at the committee meeting earlier. So the way, there's 3,500 lights that we're doing in the city, we're about 24% complete right now and the way, and it's in the hands of a private contractor. In order to keep track of all, you know, the administrative end, the lights were grouped into groups of 10 and each work request had 10 lights in the queue. Tried to do it geographically and try to, you know, so they're not running all over the street when they get, you know, a package of work requests, but it does lend itself to, you know, a portion of the street being done under one work request and it may have been given to another crew to do the rest. So, we just ask people to bear with us, we're looking at around, whoever cooperates about a three-month time from about a month into it right now, we would have about another couple of months, maybe a little bit longer to go.
Okay. All right, then I have a few smaller things that I can, you and I can just touch base on about this. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Council Zambudo.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to try to clear up some of the, what might be going out over the air, although I don't think we can be heard tonight and that's probably a good thing because my colleague asked about condemned poles, so I want to clear up the process. So let's say you see a, one of your inspectors sees a condemned pole and it's dangerous. Wouldn't that be a priority?
Yes, we...
And so, so there could be 50 condemned, quote-unquote condemned poles that are probably at very low risk of anything happening. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So, when we talk condemned poles, you know, it's kind of like saying a bridge is structurally deficient, you know? To the average person, that bridge is going to fall down tomorrow, but the reality is, there's very little risk. It just means it needs to be repaired, needs to be replaced at some later date. If there's, if there's something in a structural section of the bridge that needs to be replaced, it'll be repaired immediately, but there's no risk to the public. So, I just want to make that clear that we may be talking condemned poles here, it's far from condemned. They need to be replaced. There may be a better word than condemned and I just don't want the constituents out there to think that they're at great risk because there may be 50 condemned poles across the city. And I know for a fact that if we have double poles, even when they're near a school, they're not going to be left there in an unsafe condition. If I had any doubt about that, I would be, I would be paranoid. So, there are, you know, there are things in industry that are understood that we don't put the public at risk and I just want to make the constituents understand that condemned might not really mean condemned. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you for your clarification. Council Rotundo, did you want to?
Thank you. I'm just using the vernacular that was provided to me by, by the industry. More importantly, perhaps you can edify the council and the public, what's the difference between the structural integrity of a double pole versus a condemned pole? And perhaps you can do that, sir.
Well, every pole that's both inspect, oh, yeah, every pole that's both inspected or, and we have residents that call in about poles, that concern about the safety, every one of them is looked at and if it needs, in the opinion of our experts, it needs to be replaced right away, we do that. It's rare that we have to replace it right away. If not, it's written up in a work request, eventually the pole's replaced, it creates a double pole and we have the whole process that we have in place. Once everyone clears off, then Verizon removes the old pole. But while the two poles are there, they are left in a safe condition.
Then why do you call your poles condemned? That's an industry term, so why is it that they use that?
Perhaps we could use a better term, but we use that term to indicate that it needs replacement.
Obviously, but is there a structural purpose for it? So obviously, so I'm a nurse and when you say something is critical, that means it's going to happen now.
Yeah.
When it's not critical, it doesn't have to happen now. So, for me, condemned means critical to me.
Okay.
And I think that's what Councilor Zambudo was trying to edify the people in the public. You know, so perhaps maybe the industry needs to make a better term or at the very least you need to move the poles.
Well, if I can just interject here, I would imagine that, obviously the verbiage doesn't sound great, but I think that this priority is set for specific poles.
Correct.
And I appreciate everyone's edification. I don't think anyone wants to have any danger to our residents. There's a few other councils that wish to speak, but I also wanted to bring up the point that a lot of times the double poles are just unsightly, that's why we don't like them. So, thinks that they were overwhelmed for a number of years, but you have been doing a better job at that, so. Council Guanasso.
Thank you. I'm going to talk about non-critical poles. Proctor Ave and Broadway, it's National Grid's constituency, there's a concern on Proctor Ave and Broadway and it's pole number 176 and that's, anything close to Broadway, we want to attend to because, you know, that's the, I mean, business area and most of our visitors to our community go there. The other is there's 15 poles on Revere Street that need attention, whether they're vitally ill or what, or whatever the case may be.
vitally ill or what, or whatever the case may be. Again, as the President alluded to, it's unsightly, and the aesthetic value of the community is decreased based upon the unsightliness of these poles. I mean, no one wants to see an ugly double pole. So there are fifteen on there. And then Rosetti Street, National Grid has, there's, which is a very small street, there's one pole on, on Rosetti Street. So if we can get attention to that... Hello, Stan, how are you? Nice to see you.
Just relaying information on...
If you're talking to Dan, I can't get my message across. It's National Grid that has the pole on Rosetti Street, and maybe we can get some help on that, too.
Okay.
And again, as I stated a few minutes ago, Rosetti Street's a very small street.
Okay.
Again, the unsightliness of the, of the thing, and the people maintain their property so well, it's not fair to the homeowner or the renter to see these poles. Thank you, Mr. President.
Council, if I could respond to that?
Sure.
I just want to, you know, Revere Street, that was, that was part of a major upgrade. You know, with all the, we all know all the...
I know that. And when it, when, when it was initially being talked about, the conversation went, what I said was, this was the service Ward Five, and Ward Three was going to get all the ugliness, and Ward Five was going to get all the benefit from these power lines that had to be created, the heights and all that. So I'm asking some help for the people of Ward Three to try to remove some of these poles as quickly as possible.
No, we, we understand that, but I think most of the, I'm just saying, on that particular example on Revere Street, most of them are stuck in the municipal cable.
I know that. And I brought that to the proper people's attention, and I'm just saying that hopefully that they will, with through your efforts and everyone, they'll get them off of there. I mean, I've been told that we've got people, a, a private contractor who was going to do these, and that was at two meetings ago.
Okay.
And so we're still waiting for the private contractor. Maybe he doesn't know where, where these locations are. I don't know. But all I do know is we're providing a disservice to the community if we allow and keep these double poles in place.
Correct.
Councilor McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. Dan, I just want to say thank you. For four years, I've been asking for cement to be removed on a sidewalk around a pole, which was dangerous at an intersection when people were walking up from the train station. And it was removed about six months ago, so I want to say thank you publicly. I know we've had our battles, but it's getting better, and I'm starting to understand the process, I guess. I do have one light that's been out for four and a half years that I've been asking for, but it has no pole number and no address. And it's, it's on Cummings Park on Crescent Ave. It's a bus stop, it's in front of a bus stop, and it's in front of a crosswalk, and it's been out for four and a half years. And I don't think anybody can find it because there's no pole number, and it's a budding of park. But it is across the street from the Julia Wad Howe Assistant Living Housing. So, and that's all I can tell you, and I hope it can be fixed because it's a crucial light. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Nowosowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. Dan, just something we've talked about earlier. Florence Ave, thirty-two Florence, that pole, two-seventy-one. It's been up double pole for three years, and nothing has been touched, and it's not on the list. So that's, that's an issue. And, you know, I was up there the other day, and the neighbors still couldn't believe it was still there.
All right. It's not on the list, yep.
And over on Dehone Street, I believe it was thirty-eight Dehone Street, you changed a pole a couple of years ago, but they never put the concrete, they still have the asphalt in the ground. So we want to get that sidewalk up here.
Yeah.
Okay? And then I just got an email from a concerned businessman at Shirley Ave. Now, I know we're doing gas work there, and his, his complaint is that there's no place to park. And the Deveraux is parking all, we had this issue down on Walcott Road, and now it's happening, it's happening on Dehone Street, it's happening on the Hanth Ave, it's happening on Walnut Ave, it's happening on Shirley Ave. And these businesses are going downhill, their constituents have no place to park. And I don't know what the total answer is, other than telling Deveraux that they're going to have to find some other private parking lots to park their vehicles overnight and on weekends, too. I know they're using a piece of city-owned land at the corner of Sumner and Shirley Ave, right next to a little store. And I got a complaint today from one of our inspectors, saying the place is a mess. You know, all the debris that's all over there, so we're going to try and get Deveraux to try and...
All right, we can...
...clean up their neighborhood and put their vehicles someplace else where it's not blocking the stores and the businesses. They go, they've lost business because of that water issue that we were changing. Now they're going three, four months with a new gas line. Something has to be done to get those vehicles off the street.
All right, we can, we'll talk to Matt. All right, we talked about, we're going to catch up with him tomorrow. I'll do the same. Mr. President?
Thank you.
We have, yep.
Through you, to Councilor Nowosowski.
Councilor Rotendo.
Would it be reasonable to ask them to stage down and back a Staples and see if we can work something out with them?
I've tried to use Suffolk Downs, you know, anywhere, anywhere they can, you know. But, you know, their, their complaint is that, well, then we have to go down, and we start at seven in the morning, and by the time we get all our equipment back, it's nine o'clock before we can get going again, and it's slowing them down. I know we don't care about that. But, but that's the, they come back. But I agree with you.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Janino.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have two quick things. The first one is something that I spoke with Councilor McKenna about. It's nine ninety-one Winthrop Ave. There was a pole that was removed, and they never filled the hole. So there's just a big gaping hole in the ground, and it's near a corner, so it definitely poses a hazard that I don't want the city to be responsible for. The second thing is, I was just going to make a recommendation, Mr. President. I feel like when I first got elected and we had these meetings, we were at a place where we were getting fewer and fewer, and we were so happy that there were no more double poles, and we were really making huge progress. Now I feel like we're regressing a little bit, and we're going back to a point where the list is getting longer and the list is stretching across the city more. So I wonder if this is something that would be more appropriate in a subcommittee than before the Committee of the Whole, because every single councillor has a comment, there are people that have concerns. And the reality of Ms., most of them are work orders that are just going unanswered. So I think this may be more appropriate if we had it during, you know, Public Works or even a separate Committee of the Whole meeting, just to focus on this monthly, because I feel like it cuts into the meeting, and it, you're not allowed to have as much conversation as you could on some of the issues. So that would be a good idea.
Councilor, that's a great point, and, you know, I know that we've been doing this for some time, and sometimes the way we've always been doing it doesn't mean it's always right. But we obviously want to give this the right attention. But I think that we can probably suggest that in the future meetings to put this in the subcommittee. You know, something like today, we discussed the new LED lights, which was, was really good conversation, and I'm glad that we had that. Before we did let you go, I had a couple, just quick ones. And again, I, I agree with Councilor Janino that we've seen the pole list come down. It seems like it has ebbed and flowed a little bit lately, where it's gone up slightly. But if you can provide the council with, again, you already do, but the list, and the updated list, if you can make sure you cross-reference it with Councilor Serena's request, he has, seems to have a lot in his ward. And then, of course, if you can add to the bottom of that Councilor Rotendo's request on, you know, the, whatever the verbiage is on the poles that maybe are not up to, up to the proper par, AKA condemned. And then from my personal request, if I can ask that we look at Yemans in Warren Street, now pole number eight-thirty, just missing a light. It's one of the corners of a neighborhood, so if we can get one of those midterm, mid-tier LED lights, that'd be fantastic.
Yemans and...
Yemans and Warren Street.
Warren.
Number eight-three-zero. And do we have a resident that wanted to speak on this as well?
We have a line of residents.
Line of residents. All right. We're just going, we're dragging a little bit behind, so if we could just make it brief.
Absolutely. Sorry, we just don't often get the Holy Trinity of utilities in the city here before us. So Eric Lampadecchio, forty-three Tapley Avenue. First and foremost, my concern is with process. I've reported hundreds of tickets to three-one-one, and three-one-one reports back to me that they report this to the utility companies, yet all these issues are still outstanding. So I have a couple issues that I'm just going to bring before you that are all with three-one-one already, but they're all still outstanding and pending. The first issue is with wires wrapped around the pole at the corner of Revere Street and American Legion Highway, that's in front of Blanchard's. There's a large spool of wires there and a candy cane wrap job down the pole. Next up is there's three lights that are out on North Shore Road on the northbound side of the highway, right after Revere Street. So we're getting a lot of accidents on North Shore Road lately. You guys have spoken about it at length, and hopefully we can get those lights repaired, so hopefully people can see where they're going at night. Next up is seventy-three Sewell Street. There's a deteriorated pole. It's also defaced with some graffiti and things like that, so we're hoping to get that replaced or repaired. And last but not least is pole four-eighty-two at the corner of Harrison Eustace. As you can see, the ground and around the pole is caved in, so my concern is that that pole will eventually come and topple over. Thank you.
Thank you. And like Mr. Lampadecchio says, these are all sufficient tickets that should be put through three-one-one. And I know that sometimes they do get sent to another committee, but there are lots of process that comes into play, and the amount of work that gets done through three-one-one is tremendous. So just continue using three-one-one, have faith in the system, and then when they do lag behind, that's when you can help reach out to your ward councillor for some support. Did you want to speak?
Yes, sir.
All right. If you could just keep it brief. Thank you.
Good evening. Me, again, to all of Revere residents. I want to address Comcast, Verizon, and RCN. Time after time, I see them here for a meeting. I see all of the councillors asking for poles to be repaired, wires, everything. And from my view, I see the City of Revere being ignored quite a bit. And I'd like you to listen, please don't talk while I'm speaking. I feel that the City of Revere, I feel that the City of Revere and our elected officials are being quite ignored by you folks. Also, and it's the truth, and also Verizon and Comcast were the two players for many years, and now we have RCN in the picture. And the problem has gotten much, much worse with wires wrapped around and left so that RCN can do their business in the city and get new customers, while the Revere residents sacrifice and suffer for it, while our neighborhoods, our poles are put up on two or three blocks on a sidewalk, so this pole that's disadvantaged can do whatever its thing is supposed to do temporarily until the double pole situation replaced. A huge telephone pole put on the sidewalk on two big planks, to me, I don't call that safe, and I'm sorry, doesn't feel safe to me. Wires wrapped around poles doesn't look safe to me, doesn't feel safe to me, doesn't want me to walk, watch schoolchildren walking by it every day and other people. And when we have these severely windy days, which we've had a lot in the last few years, and it's probably not going to get better, there's winds that we have, I've seen the wires loosen. Now, is someone going to get hit in the eye or face, or does it go in front of a car and cause an accident? I'd hate to see that because you folks would be the ones getting sued. So I would take care of that situation sooner rather than later. You're being put on notice today about it.
Thank you, Ms. Gandolfo.
And another thing is...
Ms. Gandolfo, we're running out of time here.
Okay, I understand.
So what I just want to, what I just want to point out is, is RCN doesn't even show up to these meetings, so we can't really, we really can't blame them for their RCN problems because their RCN isn't here. But we've heard a number of concerns.
They wrapped the wires, though, right?
Correct. So if you do have concerns, if you want to put them to three-one-one, but we just can't spend all day talking about help and feedback.
Okay. But I just want them to know, we're not going to allow you to make Revere look like a dumb site. It's our neighborhood, we live there. When we have visitors, it's embarrassing to me to see them messed.
Ms. Gandolfo, I think they get the message.
I will.
Thank you.
And Rand Street on the corner of Washington Ave has a light out, it's been out for quite a while.
Rand and Washington Ave?
Rand, and it's very dark. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Gandolfo. Thank you. We'll close this side of the meeting. On to the next item.
Council item number five is the zoning subcommittee report.
Council Zambudo.
Thank you, Mr. President. The zoning subcommittee, Matt, obviously, this evening. There was one item, seat twenty-dash-oh-one. Seven-twenty-seven Revere Beach Parkway. I have to say that the developer stepped up to the plate and, and really made many concessions to the neighborhood way back when he could have probably built an apartment building. And I have to give credit to the ward councillor, Joanna McKenna, for all her hard work on this, because she met with the neighbors several times, worked out the problems, and, and really made a sincere effort to get this thing done, and tonight it was finally finished. The clerk will read all the, the compromises and the items that were put in this special permit, but the committee unanimously voted this out favorably for a vote tonight, and I would ask for a roll call. Thank you.
Point of information?
State your point.
Before the clerk reads the following stipulations from the neighbors, could we add Mill Street to the number one, please? Thank you.
Madam Clerk, would you read the stipulations?
Sure. Conditions of the special permit are as follows. There shall be no construction vehicles parked overnight on Taft and Mill Streets during construction. Construction shall only be permitted between the hours of seven AM and four PM. A barrier around the construction site will be provided by the developer so no debris can fall in abutting areas and properties. Storage units shall not be converted into apartments. The applicant shall notify residents two weeks in advance of the commencement of construction. The height of the building shall not exceed thirty-nine and a half feet. New concrete sidewalks with granite curbing shall be constructed along the full frontage of the property on Taft Street, and four Chanticleer pear trees shall be planted within the sidewalk layout on Taft Street along the rear of the building. There shall be no vehicular or pedestrian access or egress from the site onto Taft Street, and Taft Street shall not be used as a service entrance to the building. There shall be no outdoor storage of materials or equipment allowed on the site. The final architectural and exterior building materials plans shall be approved by the Site Plan Review Committee. A parking lot layout plan and landscaping plan shall be approved by the Site Plan Review Committee. And in accordance with chapter seventeen-point-four-seven of the revised Revere zoning ordinances, this project is subject to participation in the Community Improvement Trust Fund.
Roll call.
Shall the City Council grant the relief requested by the applicant to reconstruct and modify a pre-existing non-conforming structure for the purpose of constructing a four-story building utilized for self-storage use at seven-twenty-seven Revere Beach Parkway, subject to the findings and conditions of Site Plan Review and the zoning subcommittee? Councilor Janino?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Ganaso?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Nowosowski?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Rotendo?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Serena?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Keith?
Yes.
Yes, the special permit has been granted. Next up is the Public Works Subcommittee Report.
Council Nowosowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I had my first subcommittee in Public Works, and I thank you for appointing me as chairman for that committee. It is dear to my heart in making sure that everything gets clarified and done properly in the city, along with my colleagues. First item we talked about was Traffic Commission establishing a new regulation on parking motor vehicles within ten feet of a crosswalk. We came to an agreement on that, and that there will be signs posted, the ordinance will be written, and the crosswalks will be taken on an as-needed basis. So if any of our colleagues or myself know of a crosswalk in the middle of a block that cars park real close to it, those are the type of crosswalks we want to put in on the list. So I'd ask that we... Recommendation was made to approve that to the Traffic Commission.
So on that recommendation, all in favor? All opposed?
That's number one.
Sorted.
Number two was discussion on the longer way to DPW facility. Superintendent Public Works appeared before us and gave us an update, and it looks like that we're going to have to... Target date for completion is somewhere in November 2022. So I'm sure we are going to have some funding brought before us somewhere down the line. But at least we're working on it. I don't want our folks in the DPW to think we forgot about them. We know they're one of the hardest-working groups in the city, and as far as I'm concerned, they're almost a public safety group. But even though they're not targeted at, but they deal with public safety, and it's almost is equal to fire and police because of the work they do with the streets. So I think we can place that on file for now and move on from there.
Place on file.
And the next item we talked about was the installation of the LED streetlights, which Counselor Sorino mentioned before, and as everybody else did. And just to let everybody know, we're still in a kind of a planning stage and doing things as we go along as far as testing. We know some of the lights are very dim, the 25-watt LEDs, and some of them are very bright, the 210-watt LEDs. I got complaints on both, and right now it seems that the 48s and the 96s seem to be the medium number, and I know we'll be able to pick and choose at some locations a larger light than normal. So it was brought to light. I wanted everybody to know what was going on, and everybody seemed to be very interested and happy with the new system. So I think we can place that on file.
Place on file.
And the last item was the new resident parking regulations, which we've been working on, I think, for two years and three years, okay? If I stay incorrect. And the Superintendent Public Works, who is the chairman of the Traffic Commission, explained his portion of it, and the Parking Director, Jim Rose, appeared on his half, and things are moving along. So it looks like somewhere April, everything will be ready to go, and people will get their stickers for their cars for overnight parking by mail, as long as they have paid their excise tax. And there will be stickers, and they will be allowed to get one visitor pass, and I believe it's... They didn't mention it, but I believe it's $10 for that overnight visitor pass. And if you have resident parking in your neighborhood now, that will not be changed. This is for overnight parking in areas that are not... Do not have a restriction of resident parking now. So I think that's all we have to say for now, and I believe that we can place that on file. Thank you.
We'll place that on file. Place on file. Communications?
Calendar item number nine, communication from the Election Commissioner relative to the warrant for March 3, 2020 presidential primary.
Hi, Diane Colala.
Ms. Colala.
Election Commissioner, how are you? I'm seeking approval for the warrant for the presidential primary on March 3.
All in favor?
Thank you.
All opposed? In favor?
Calendar item number 10, communication from the Election Commissioner seeking an approval of exemption to allow public employees to work the polls on election day.
I stand before you to ask for approval of exemption to allow part-time city workers to work at the polls on election day.
Counselor Rotundo?
Will this particular... Through you, Mr. President, to Commissioner Colala, will this be temporizing for solely the presidential election, or will this be ongoing?
For the whole year. I do it every January for the year.
So it's only good for one year?
One year.
Thank you.
Any other councilors? All in favor? Opposed? All in favor?
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Calendar item number 11, communication from the city auditor relative to the certification of free cash as of June 30, 2019.
Thank you, Counsel. Brought before you this evening the news from the Department of Revenue that free cash has been certified as of June 30, 2019, in the amount of $6,303,811, as well as for the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund of $3,017,848. So before you are the perfunctory transfers into the respective stabilization funds that are set up by city ordinance. So happy to discuss or talk of any of the information regarding the free cash or these transfers. Otherwise, I think these are pretty perfunctory as per statute, so.
Counselor McKenna.
Can we stop putting our wish list in?
Yes, you may.
Any other councilors? Counselor Rotundo?
Correct me if I'm wrong, but this is probably the largest free cash that we've had in our history.
Exactly how much? Hold on, I think I have a document. It's pretty close. It's...
Here we go.
So in terms of general fund?
Yes.
In terms of general fund, it is the most ever?
It is.
But last year, I think we certified more between Water and Sewer General Fund...
Collectively, right.
Collectively, right, right. So...
But this is the largest free cash that we've ever had budgetarily in our history.
Largest general fund free cash amount.
Congratulations.
That's what we certified. Yeah, thank you, thank you.
I did have that information there, by the way. Just had to get to it.
I don't think I've ever seen two people stumble over a mic so much to just to celebrate that, which rightfully so, rightfully so. Any other councilors?
Motion to accept.
Motion to accept. We have four roll call votes on this, and I just wanted to point out that this is a time to be proud of our budgetary constraints in the city and what we've done to raise funding, but also I know that some of this is going to go right back into the city with water and sewer reductions and hopefully eventual tax reduction. So thank you in advance, and for Counsel McKenna's wish list.
You're welcome.
Roll call.
On the first motion, shall the city council approve a transfer in the amount of $945,572 from free cash to the General Fund Stabilization Fund? Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselfsky?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Sorino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Keith?
Yes.
Yes, that transfer has been approved. On the second motion, shall the city council approve a transfer in the amount of $1,260,762 from free cash to the Capital Improvement Stabilization Fund? Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselfsky?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Sorino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Keith?
Yes.
Yes, that transfer has been approved. On the third motion, shall the city council approve a transfer in the amount of $250,000 from free cash to the Other Post Employment Benefit Trust Fund? Counselor Janino? Yes, Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselfsky?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Sorino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Keith?
Yes.
Yes, that motion has been approved.
Pleasure.
And the last motion, shall the city council approve a transfer in the amount of $452,667 from Water and Sewer Free Cash to the Water and Sewer Stabilization Fund? Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselfsky?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Sorino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Visconti?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Keith?
Yes.
Yes, that transfer has been approved. Calendar item number 12, communication from the mayor relative to municipal building improvements.
Mr. Mayor?
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the council. Just to go back to the prior item and the amounts that you've deposited into our stabilization funds or our capital improvement funds, those are all our record amounts that we have now in our savings accounts, which is great, great news and a testament to all of your leadership in the budget process. We will be coming before the council with a capital improvement plan pretty soon. We will be coming probably with some investments in the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund. That enterprise fund is really healthy, and we should probably start to look at some capital projects that we can draw that money down for. So that's just kind of a couple of items to have on your agenda or on your radar. In terms of the communication in front of you that the clerk just read, as you'll remember, a couple of years ago, the city received insurance proceeds from the repairs of the tornado damage. We have... We've now done the roof and, as you all know, the tower above the roof, and we now are looking at other improvements that we can make in the building that are not necessarily tied to the tornado repairs. Some of the repairs in this chamber, for example, cannot be necessarily directly tied to the tornado, but we do want to do this work. So we have a pretty significant amount of money that we're going to be looking to invest back into the building and potentially invest back into the Legion Building. And actually, technically, $2.3 million available in that tornado repair fund. So we can do some good work in our municipal buildings and get them up to speed. One thing that we know that we've... We have a little bit of work to do around is ADA compliance. Ralph DeChico has done a great job in terms of getting us up to speed in some buildings and knowing what our liabilities are. So we want to be able to do some of that work, and that's not necessarily tied to the tornado repair directly. So the appropriation or the vote that you would take would allow us the ability to use that money to make these improvements. One last note, there was a building committee that was formed as part of the use of this money or of the tornado repair money, and we're going to keep that building committee alive. Rich Visca will be the chair of that, and the idea behind that is that we'll get all of the great resources in City Hall and that work for the city together to make sure that we're doing everything we can to leverage every single penny to make sure that this building is a beautiful building that we can... We're proud to show off. So if anyone has any questions, we're more than willing to answer them. Thank you.
Counselor McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just one, just to put a little something in your ear. This council chambers doesn't have heat. We have brand-new air conditioning, but we don't have heat, and we've had a wonderful winter. But last year, we were all freezing. I had to buy a little heater and put it underneath my seat. So if we could fix the heat up here, it'd be great.
Yep. We've had... We've been very lucky with the winter. I don't like to talk about it. You know, we knock on wood every time we mention it, but yeah, to your point, those are things that we'd be looking at. I talked to Captain Fortuna, who was doing actually some emergency planning in our building pretty recently, because we've never done a fire drill in City Hall, and that was something that we... So maybe we should be thinking about that stuff. And that's one thing that he's talked about, fire prevention, even in terms of that, making sure that we're protected. Yeah. I see, yes, I know. Counselor Janino?
Counselor Novoselfsky?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, through you to the mayor, I said, this program, facility maintenance, that's the key to my heart. Thirty years I was a facility manager for the Commonwealth of Mass, and all this is dear to my heart, and I'm glad to see, finally, finally, someone has put in some effort into restoring all the buildings in the city. I know this is an emergency situation. It's a historic place, but you know, all our schools, all our sub-buildings, Rec Center, any other building we own is very, very important. I'm glad we've seen to pump some funding into repairing these things, even the American Legion, which is another spot in my heart that you mentioned, and we're still waiting for that one window from the tornado to be repaired. And you know, here it is, six years since it happened. We're still waiting for one window to be repaired. And then also the handicap accessibility into the Legion Building. That ramp is starting to get old, and you know, not only are our veterans using it, but we use it for our election polls, you know, location, and I'm starting to get a little leery on the condition of that ramp. So hopefully, I know we put away...
The ramp is a priority. I'll say that.
I know we put away $50,000 a few years ago, you know, but we know it's going to be a lot more than that with the way the granite stairs are and the bathrooms inside and the doorways, you know, have to be done. So I know that $50,000 is not going to be enough.
It won't be enough, but there is some good news. We... I believe we're opening up bids for engineering services related specifically to the Legion stairs, and that is, you know, we've talked about the program for this insurance, these insurance proceeds, and that is something that we know is a priority.
Well, our veterans at the Legion want to know what was going on.
Right.
You know, because, you know, it's...
Because we socked that money away a couple of years ago.
Right, that's correct.
Yeah, right.
So, well, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
On behalf of our legionnaires and our veterans, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Rotundo.
Thank you, through you to the mayor. Mr. Mayor, you probably know this better than anybody else. One of the issues that I find from time to time, and Counsel Guanasso has been there several times, is that you find people that come up to City Hall that don't speak English and can't read English for that matter. Is there a way of getting people in the City Hall that can speak both Spanish and Arabic and help with interpretation and things of that nature? If not, I would tell you that there's an alternative that they use within hospitals. It's a device, and I'll find out the information accordingly. You pay on a monthly basis, and then obviously they charge based upon the language that's used. It's a very simple system. But for me, that seems, you know, to be an issue that we're facing, and obviously with a growing community, that's what we're going to have to deal with.
Yep. And I'll say this, we've hired more folks who speak multiple languages than I think any other administration. Proud of that, and whatever we can do, even audio visually throughout the halls, we've talked about monitors, you know, multiple languages, just to be able to inform people what's going on, those are all things that we'll be looking into. But if you have any technology that helps along with that to communicate, absolutely interested in finding that out.
Pretty much what we use in emergency rooms, or for that matter in the O.R., to basically get a consent. I would say it's possible, and I'm not sure if the clerk or anybody else can, you know, determine if it's possible, but to have particular documents, like a marriage document in multiple languages. So thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Powers?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Mayor, I just have two suggestions, and one of them would be to clean up the area directly behind us, I think, where that stage is there. That's space that could be better used than just storing boxes on, and I know they were there when you got here, so I'm not faulting you for that. But I think the ceiling needs to be done. God knows if there's... What is in that ceiling? If it could be hazardous to someone's health? And I think maybe office space. You know, we're all at a crossroads in the city where the city is growing, and more space is going to be needed, and I think that to provide some office space in back there, maybe even a place where the council could sit, you know, when they're not in session here. The other thing is, and I know you use the stairs every morning yourself coming into work, the granite stairs on the south side of the building particularly, and even on the north side, handrail in the center there that would help with people going in and out of the building. They can be very slippery, as you know. You get up to the top, and you have to cross over some way to get to open the door.
Uh, you get up to the top and you have to cross over some way to get to open the door. So I think that's an area, and those are the two areas that I really have concerns with. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you, Counselor. Um, I'll say this about the auditorium. I know I mentioned the priorities of, of, uh, this chamber, um, and of the Legion. Probably the biggest priority is, uh, behind us in the auditorium where that is such a, um, a, a huge amount of wasted space at this point. Uh, and so we are kinda looking at the feasibility of having potential flex- flexible office space, um, maybe conference space for the council, uh, that can attach back here, um, and, uh, and some other, some other type of space. Uh, storage space is big, um, in, in City Hall, a big need. Uh, but the program, we'll, we'll make sure to, uh, update the council on the program of how the 2.3 will be spent, but the bulk of it will be, you know, this chamber, the auditorium, um, and then other places where we can, where we can fix things up. I know the treasurer's office needs a little bit of work. The wall, the wall walking up the stairs, uh, to the treasurer's office is a mess. Um, there's, so there's some, some cosmetic work that needs to be done inside City Hall. And, and the hair, the handrails are a good point. We, you know, that's something that, I know the handrails were put up, um, a few years ago inside the building, um, up the middle. Um, there probably is some, uh, some use of those, uh, middle handrails, uh, on the north and south sides of, of the building as well. So, thank you for the, thank you for the input.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There's gonna be roll call vote today. Oh, Counsel Zambudo. My apologies.
You can't, you can't forget me.
I never forget.
Mr. President. Uh, I'm certainly in favor of, uh, using these funds appropriately and I, I know there are a lot of areas that really need it and, uh, so I support it. But I, I wanted to mention that I let the other, uh, stuff go by about the free cash. I wanna congratulate the administration.
Yeah.
For its, uh, due diligence in the budget area and, uh, it's, uh, record free cash and somebody needs to say kudos, so.
Yeah, thank you. I have a great team.
I know you do.
You know, I take all the credit. You guys, uh, have, have a big part in, of it during the budget process, so, you know, it's, it's a testament to everyone's hard work in the, in the community.
I congratulated our new Director of Finance tonight, uh, on his new position and, uh, and, uh, I'm, I'm just, uh, proud to be part of this team and, uh, uh, you know, it needs to get recognized when you do good.
Thank you.
And not to mention all the awards that the city has gotten recently and, uh, I don't know if anybody knew about the MMA Award, the-
Yeah, we won, uh, Best Website Award for the city, so it's more good news.
Best website in the state. I mean, Revere, Massachusetts, okay?
Any more kudos, he's not gonna be able to fill out the, he's not gonna be able to fill out the council chambers.
We, you know, and sometimes we have to take-
Let's take it in stride, one meeting at a time.
Sometimes we have to take a victory lap and the city deserves a victory lap because we, we were recognized statewide for, for, for that honor. Thank you.
Kudos, Mr. Mayor. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Shall the City Council approve a transfer in the amount of $2,343,332 from the tornado insurance proceeds account to the municipal building repairs and maintenance account? Counselor Geno.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Granasso.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Morabito.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Novoselfsky.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Powers.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Rotundo.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Sorino.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Visconti.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, and Counsel President Keith.
Yes.
Yes, the transfer has been approved.
Madam Clerk, before we take the next item up, if I can ask for suspension rules just to take up, um, motion number 22, uh, by Counselor Sorino. We have a Director of Veterans Affairs in the building. I'd like to have him speak now, so we can take that up. All in favor? 22.
Calendar item number 22, motion presented by Counselor Sorino, that the may request the Director of Finance to designate a spot on its municipal tax bills or include a form enclosed with its tax bills whereby taxpayers of the city may voluntarily check off and donate an amount of money to be paid to a municipal account designated for Revere's veterans. The purpose of such a Revere Veterans Fund would be to provide support for Revere veterans and their dependents in need of immediate assistance with food, transportation, heat, and emergency lodging.
Counselor Sorino, on your motion.
So, uh, Mr. President, first off, thank you for appointing me as Chair of the Veterans Subcommittee. Um, I never served, but I do feel in my heart, um, it, uh, veterans and taking care of our veterans is a huge priority for me. And I, I've been telling, uh, Director Silvestri since I got elected, you know, anything I can do to help, um, our veterans, I'd like to do that. So, um, Director Silvestri and I, uh, sat down and we talked and, um, I know other municipalities have this program and he said he would like if Revere could, uh, do it as well. Uh, so basically we would just set an account, um, set up an account and have, um, a form on the municipal tax bills, not different than, you know, the Revere Scholarship and whatnot, um, where residents can voluntarily, uh, donate any amount of money that they so choose and it would be added onto their, their tax bill. Um, and that money would go directly to this veterans fund, which could be used to help our own, um, the veterans in Revere for, you know, be it, uh, emergency food or, um, shelter or, or heat and whatnot. So, um, Director Silvestri, I know you're here and, so, thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Morabito.
Thank you. Commend my colleague on this, uh, motion. Think it's great. I was act- I actually have this in the works, but can I just ask a question? Do you know if we accept it as a council, um, Chapter 60, Section 3F? Because in order to, for, um, to have voluntary donating to veteran assistance, like to have a fund, we have to accept Chapter 60, um, Section 3F. So if you'll make an amendment? Okay. Is that on the motion? Okay.
So I think what we, we can do is when we, uh, we can vote on this and then it would come back with a more of an approval on the, on the acceptance of 603F.
And probably request to create the fund.
And to request the fund. So this will go to the mayor for the mayor's approval, come back to us and then we probably dice it up and do it right. Oh, Mr. Silvestri.
Counselor Mark Silvestri, Director of Veterans Services, 501 Revere Beach Parkway. Um, just here to speak in favor of the motion. Uh, Counselor Morabito is correct with the adoption of, um, 603F. It would, uh, and I know we do have a few other, um, outlets for emergency funds. Nothing that would be remotely near what I would be able to do with, with something like this. And our Chapter 115 program that helps indigent veterans is, um, income-based and finance-based. So we know that people who have an income sometimes run into some hard times as well. So it's, uh, this will help those veterans that will exceed the indigent-based funds and will have an option to help all the veterans in the city. So I'm just here in favor of that as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Silvestri. Counsel Zambudo.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I just wanna commend my colleague on this motion. Now, he's a brand-new counselor and, uh, I dare say this, no matter how many years you serve here, this will probably go down as one of your best motions because this is, uh, this is, this is, uh, as good a motion as I've seen. So I wanna congratulate you and, uh, this is, uh, this is great.
Thank you. And, oh, Counsel Visconti.
I wanna say, you took the words out of my mouth, but I wanna say, uh, congratulations, Ricky. Uh, it is, it's a great motion. Anything we can do to help our, uh, veterans, our Revere veterans is, uh, is a plus. So, um, um, congratulations and, uh, I look forward to donating.
If I may speak, um, this is a great motion. So Ricky, uh, Counsel Sorino, you make, uh, me look good by appointing you to Veterans Affairs and, uh, thank you for doing this. Uh, I'm surprised that we haven't thought of this in the past, but good po- good point bringing it up. We can approve this tonight and then it will go to the mayor and then it'll come back and we'll have to, um, approve, do some more approval, so this doesn't have to go into the Subcommittee, but when it comes back to us in May. So, all in favor? Opposed? All, eyes have it. Uh, back to regular business. Item number 13.
Calendar item number 13, communication from Danny DeGug, Cambridge, Mass, requesting City Council's support of the Cambridge Sunshine Foundation to install seven water fountains on Revere Beach Boulevard.
Mister, would you pronounce that for me?
D'Aglio.
Mister D'Aglio.
Yes. Where's the button on the mic? The bar. Okay. Thank you. My Uncle Joseph was the first Italian mayor of Cambridge and he was also the only person in the history of Cambridge to be both mayor and city manager. I come to you tonight, stand before you all, requesting your intellectual support in relationship to the state, federal, and also charitable organizations to support several wonderful, dynamically-made, best-quality-made, marbleized water fountains, but not just on the beach. Maybe one, maybe three there, but in other locations throughout our city to honor Mr. Paul Revere and to honor him as the first responder and a major veteran in the fight for liberty, for he being a son of liberty. One may call Revere Beach Liberty Beach. Liberty Beach, wow, is it Liberty Beach? Maybe it is, just like we have a Liberty Bell in Philadelphia. Perhaps this beach also should be known and respected as Liberty Beach. Not renamed, but just understood. Though, the water fountain that I suggest for the beach could be as tall as 28 to 36 feet tall, as wide as 36 feet, and made out of the finest materials possible. Your support for this program would work with the people who have the money and allowing the people who have the money, we'll say charitable organizations, to be the trustees of the money, that the money won't flow into any treasury that is my, in my foundation or in the city foundation, but within the minds of those people who are in Bank of America, are two organizations like ICN and Comcast coming together and building this beautiful and wonderful presence. So I'm seeking your support intellectually so I can talk to DeLeo, our great speaker, that I can talk to members that are of my organization to see what we can do, but also all of the charities that we can reach out to, to support this, maybe it's all together, all seven of them, perhaps $2 to $4 million. I was thinking, just one moment if I may share this with you.
Briefly.
On the, yes, on the beach, we would have this beautiful marble water fountain with two or three marbleized horses inside of it. So when the water flows over, we can see the image that would represent Paul Revere's horse, Brown Beauty. So please think about this and I'll contact perhaps the clerk. And with that in mind, I thank you for your time.
Well, thank you for coming here and, um, you can turn that off. It was, uh, it's a great idea and, um, I don't think that any of the councils would be against, opposed to this. We probably, we would probably all verbally support, uh, but as, as I know the clerk probably has mentioned, the DCR controls the beach and they would have to be the final approvers and, and the people who make this move, so we-
I wanted everyone to know about-
Thank you.
Before I did anything with the commissioner.
Yeah. And we will be, um, we'll be happy to discuss this with them as well.
Thank you.
But thank you for your presentation tonight.
Thank you.
Place it on file.
Calendar item number 14, motion presented by Counsel McKenna, that the may request the License Commission, the Fire Department, and ISD to investigate Majestic Motors 14 for a long drive for any violations, including but not limited to operating a Class II business without a license, improper storage of flammables, and for unclean, unsanitary conditions.
Counsel McKenna.
Thank you, uh, Mr. President. I have pitches to go along with these. I went down there and took pitches. Um, out of sight, out of mind, that's what I'm gonna say about Majestic Auto and, and I'm gonna include, I'd like to, uh, ask the clerk to include Sullivan Tire in this. Five descrip- descriptions come to mind. Horrendous conditions of fire traffic, disgusting, shameful. They're doing whatever they want to. Heavily littered with 60 cars on their property, enormous amount of auto, auto part debris, dumping behind their fence into Green Creek, unregistered cars and trucks, uh, using Sullivan Tire as an overflow for vehicles, parking on the streets in a no parking zone. Abutting neighbors have seen Majestic Auto test driving and selling cars, putting, uh, um, I'm sorry, I can't think of the license plates on their car, dumping radio wa- uh, radiator waste fluid into the sewers. I know we're in litigation, but, I mean, do they have the right to do this? No, they don't have the right to do this. We should be building a case on this horrendous property that they're getting away to, uh, to do whatever they want. Furlough drive, furlong drive is a gateway into Revere and we go through this disgusting path of businesses that are just doing whatever they want to. So, it's deplorable. Sullivan's, uh, tires, the same story, another sore ride, filled with unregistered smashed-up cars and trucks, tires all over the place, overloaded dumpsters, budgeted trucks parked on the front lawn of their building, also dumping tires and debris in the creek behind their property. As you can see with the pitches, I mean, I was afraid to go in there just because of the rodents. So I'm asking the city to step up and let's get together and clean up these two properties. They're disgusting. It's, I saw for Revere and it is the gateway into Revere, so please, listen to my plea. We did this two and a half years ago. We cited them with multiple fines. They cleaned it up. Now it's back to where it was when we started. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel Rotundo.
Through you to, uh, Counsel McKenna, do you know the name of the person that owns the property?
I do not.
I do. Am I, you feel comfortable? If we can send a letter to Mr. Stivell, uh, regarding, uh, Majestic Motors, Inc., uh, he's the one that's owning the property at 14, um, Fallon Drive and that's, uh, that's, I'll give you the, without doxing him, I'll give you his address, but we need to send him a letter at the quickest convenience. What's going on down there is just not right. Thank you.
Counsel Powers.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I, just looking at those photos, uh, tells me there's a serious problem and, uh, I think it is incumbent upon Inspection Services, uh, tomorrow morning to get down to that property, uh, document the, with their own photos actually what's going on down there and start finding on a daily basis until that area is cleaned up, at, at the maximum amount possible, which I believe is, uh, $490 or $500 per day. And, uh, I, I think that's, to let that go on beyond this week is insanity and, uh, we should be down there taking care of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel Visconti.
Thank you, uh, Mr. President. Counselor McKenna, did you say that we, uh, are in litigation with them right now? Not over this, I take it.
This is on the Broadway property.
I'm sorry, through the chair.
Just to answer that, that's, uh, there's, there's some litigation on the Broadway property, which is a separate-
Oh, okay.
-property, same owner, separate property.
Okay. Well, I, uh, I couldn't agree more. Counsel Powers, uh, uh, a perfect, uh, um, recommendation of having ISD out there immediately and, uh, start finding them per day. It's, uh, that is, uh, an embarrassment, okay, of how that, uh, that site is being, um, taken care of. So immediate action needs to be taken and taken right away. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel Zambudo.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I wanna thank the Ward 1 counselor for, uh, bringing this to our attention. This is deplorable. Uh, I agree with my colleague from Ward 5 that, uh, this needs immediate action tomorrow morning, uh, from Inspection Services and, uh, this, this needs to be cleaned up. I may wanna bring in DEP and other, other situations here, cause there's a lot of, lot of violations of all kinds, uh, and, and there's even, even accusations of, uh, running a, a used car business, which is a, another unlicensed, uh, situation. So, uh, this needs to be addressed immediately and I congratulate my colleague for bringing this to our attention.
Thank you, Counselor. And if I may, this, this again, it's too bad that, to see this and like you mentioned, it is out of sight because I don't happen to see it. I don't, I obviously don't drive in that area, but, you know, when we ask our residents to take care of their properties, you know, people that own homes, that own home businesses, um, we would never expect them to, to treat their property or let their neighborhood look like this. So we should never let a commercial business do this. Uh, and, uh, I will be on the phone, just like Counsel McKenna, tomorrow morning with ISD and, uh, I'll be seeing the mayor tonight after this to make sure that he, uh, instructs ISD to go there tomorrow morning first thing and every day subsequent until this is resolved. Thank you. All in favor? So moved.
Calendar- Calendar item number 15, motion presented by Council McKenna that the mayor requests ISD to investigate Lee's Trailer Park on Revere Beach Parkway for building and health code violations. The property is in complete disarray and needs to be brought up to code.
Council McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, out of sight, out of mind, dirty, filthy, people living in squalor, people living in some trailers that don't even have bathrooms, trailers boarded up, windows broken, litter everywhere behind trailers, abutting Green Creek again. If you go down to the trailer, if you go to any other trailer park, even off of Route 1, you'll never see the conditions of a trailer park in this condition. We've lived with this for years and years and years, and we turned a blind eye. It's about time that we take care of our people down there, and you know, people say, oh, there's a lot of drug addicts down there. No, there isn't. I went down there, and one of my students, that I was a former teacher, came out of her trailer and said, hello, Ms. McKenna, how you doing? And I said, what are you doing? She says, I live here with my father. I mean, people are financially strapped, people, the rents are too high, and these are the places that they're going, and they're living in squalor, and we're allowing this to happen. It's disgusting. And I'm showing you, these are the pictures of Lee's Trailer Park. This is the back of Lee's Trailer Park, they're putting down these grates because flooding, what's happening is they're flooding, they're clogging the creek that's in back of all these businesses, and the water's running into the trailer park. So these people have no way to get into their trailers, so they're walking on crates, I don't know what they're called. Pallets. But it's ridiculous. When is it going to stop? We should put a cease and desist on this property and have it find, and have these people play somewhere else. Look at this trailer. It's ridiculous. So, I mean, and people are living there. Would you want to live there? And you know, it's not all people that have hardship, drug problems, it's people that have hardships, that they can't go anywhere, they need a home, and that was a perfect example of my student. So please, let's finally, this has been going on for years. Two and a half years ago, I went down there, they took 12 loads, truckloads of debris out, I don't know how many abandoned vehicles, and people cleaned up their property. People were coming out and saying thank you to me, I couldn't believe it. So, you know, we're on the way of developing beautiful structures down the beach, but we're allowing these places that are out of sight, out of mind, to be like this. We're not doing anything. And it's my fault too, because I should go down there more regularly and say, okay, this needs to be done, this needs to be done, and that's on me. But I'm bringing this up two and a half years later, and now it's going back to the same conditions that it was before. So, come on, people, let's help these people, let's clean up this trailer park if we're going to keep it, let's get all the debris and smashed cars and abandoned cars and whatever out there, and let's make it respectable so these people can live every day without living like this. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Rotundo.
Thank you. Several things. Number one, I'm sure we can contact the owner, what have you, and get him to do his job. Number one. Number two, you've got to be very careful about the housing issue down there. Trying to find them new housing is probably the best thing that we can do. The question is, is where? And so if we're going to make an attempt with moving these people out, then we need to make a more serious attempt to find them a place to go. We can't just talk about it. So, if we're serious about it, we need to speak with the mayor, we need to speak with the head of Revere Housing, we need to find out the needs of these people, because what I just seen is beyond squalor, I mean, this is beyond Third World. I'm being serious. I mean, I've been to the Third World, that's what that looks like. And, so, I'm willing to help, and at the very least, I'm willing to speak to that owner and get him to do his diligence. Thank you.
Point of information, Mr. President.
Say your point.
You said it the best. You said if someone doesn't keep their house the way they're supposed to, we shut it down. Why can't we shut this property down? You know? I understand the people, but, I mean, we need to clean it up.
Agreed. I think we're all, I think we're all in agreement there, and again, it does start with cleaning it up and making it somewhere where people do want to live, and then, you know, it's a broken window policy. All in favor? Oh, sorry?
Mr. President, just on another note, other than conservation, and the reason why people say drug addicts and everything down there, Joanna, is I listen to the, I have a Facebook page for the police log, like Terrell does. There's probably at least a dozen, 15 calls a week for potential overdoses in that trailer park, so it's, that's why it happens, and that's why people say it. So it definitely needs to be cleaned up, but there's also a major drug problem in that trailer park as well, unfortunately, so something does need to be done.
Thank you. All in favor? opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number 16, motion presented by Council McKenna that the mayor be requested to notify the Conservation Commission and the Environmental Protection Agency of the deplorable conditions of Green Creek behind Lee's Trailer, Sullivan Tire, and Majestic Auto. Excessive illegal dumping continues in this creek, creating havoc by jeopardizing wildlife and stopping water circulation to and from Belle Isle Creek, which causes flooding.
Council McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm so passionate about, you know, wildlife and birds and duck breeding and waterways and trees, and I can't help it, but two and a half years ago, we had the same problem. It was worse, but it has now stopped the creek, the flow of the creek, so the creek can go underneath and go into Belle Isle Marsh Creek. It's flooding Lee's Trailer Park, and we do have wildlife in there breeding, and just by the pictures you can see, it's horrendous. So I'm just asking for this creek to have, get some attention. That's a bird's nest with babies, right there, in squalor, again. So I'm just asking for the creek to be cleaned. I don't know who can go in there and clean that creek, but to get, to sharpen cuts out, the tires and all that debris. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Name and address.
Nick Malais, 143 Lantern Road. I'm the chairman of the Conservation Commission. We actually just issued an order of conditions to the Water Department, which is going to start cleaning that creek, because believe it or not, the debris and everything you see on top is the least of the problems. There's a 54-inch pipe that makes that water flow through there, with seven feet of sediment that blocks that pipe, so you can't even see the pipe right now. So Don Chamala from the Water, Superintendent of the Water Department, just got an order of conditions from me last week, over the next three years, he's going to start a process, little by little, the city's going to do it themselves. The problem is, there's no budget for it, because we don't know where the dirt needs to be dumped. They're going to go in and take a foot or two out at a time, and if the dirt's clean enough to go to a regular dump, it'll go at a reasonable cost. If it's dirty or contaminated, then it needs to go to another dump, which is going to cost more. So there is an order of conditions to start, and Don had also mentioned about, once it's done or in the process, to put up some sort of a camera, so that we can see who is dumping once illegal dumping does happen, or where's the access to illegal dumping, other than from the properties, the people backing up down there and throwing mattresses and couches and stuff like that, so maybe put up a camera somewhere, so once we do get it cleaned.
Thank you, Nick. Council Janino.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to commend my colleagues tonight, there are some really great motions before us, and, you know, I really have two words on that note, Nick, if there's no budget, free cash. And that's the perfect number one item on McKenna's wish list, so I think that would be a great use of that, to really take care of some of these properties that are neglected and that the city needs to clean up, so that would be my recommendation.
That's something that Don had mentioned last week about free cash, and because the city's going to do it themselves instead of subcontracting it out, it's going to cost us a lot less than to have a private contractor do it, so if we do it ourselves, and obviously we need to do it in between water main breaks and other stuff to get going on in the city, so. Donnie, if it was up to Donnie, he'd be right down there now with a shovel, cleaning it out himself, with his boots on and doing it himself, so I know he's very passionate about getting it done himself right away.
Thank you.
Rockol Falzoni, 55, just kind of have. Council McKenna, I feel your pain. Your pain is my pain. I live in Ward 6. The difference between what you're talking about and Ward 6, there's a lot of money in Ward 6. I've been flooding for 29 years. I hate like hell the rigness up, because I was told that there's no more anybody can do for me. But the difference between living in squalor, and if people can't take care of their property, it's Ward 6, Ward 4, Ward 5, something should be done. For 29 years, I've been complaining, complaining, and complaining, and still, promises, promises, promises. Good luck, nothing's happened yet. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Falzoni. All in favor? So moved.
Calendar item number 17, motion presented by Council Rotundo that the city of Revere look into the feasibility of adding zoning to permit vertical farming within city limits.
Council Rotundo.
I'd like to put this in committee, but I believe there's a question.
Council Morabito has a question.
I was very intrigued when reading this. I just have a few questions, like, what, who's going to be the target for this? Is there a location, like, is it for nonprofit businesses, is it for the community, is it for our local farmer's market, or is there any specific location in mind, or for the use?
Sure, so.
Council Rotundo.
The idea is to have the zoning in the event that someone would decide to come to the area and look for, let's say, a warehouse, or for that matter, a location. Elon Musk's brother, Kimball, is doing this in several cities throughout the nation. In fact, he's doing it in New York City, in shipping containers, and they produce more product within a shipping container than they do in an acre of land using 90% less water and a third of the energy resources, by using solar on top of it. So, maybe today we don't have someone that's looking for, but at least we'll have that on our books, and we can say to somebody, hey, let's say someone down at Amazon decides, oh, vertical farming, Aero Farms out in Fort Devens is doing this, why not have it over here? We've got 800,000 square feet of warehouse. Amazon sells food, why not make the food here in Revere? We've got the workers, we've got the area, we've got the modalities of location from access to 95, 90, 93, not only that, close to Moran Terminal, just think of all the possibilities. So, why limit things? And it's a very simple issue, all it is is just adding zoning. And at the end of the day, if someone decides to go build a building over at Wonderland, or for that matter, even over at Suffolk Downs, and they say, we want to do some vertical farming, we already have it here. That's it.
Good point. Council Zambuto.
It's going to go to zoning committee, and we'll study it there, I'm happy to entertain it. Thanks.
For across the zoning, Council Janino has a question as well.
I didn't comment more than a question. You know, Revere started as a farming community, we had Rollins, we had Janino's, we had a lot of places like that in the city, and I think that the way this industry has grown in the past 30 years is amazing. In my day job, one of my customers owns a very lucrative lettuce company, and what they do is they rent rooftops, and they're in New York, they're in Chicago, they're in, they just bought property in Rhode Island, and every time they buy a new farm, I'm like, why can't we have this in Boston? Why can't we have this near us? And it's very similar to what Council Rotundo mentioned, it's all hydroponic, solar powered, sustainable, and they're growing lettuce, and that's it, lettuce and basil. So if we could have that kind of business in the city, again, and it's not taking up more space, because we're very limited for our green space, but to put it on top of a roof, or on top of a warehouse, or use that space creatively, something I would have never thought of, and it's a great motion.
Yep, very good motion. This is going to go to zoning, and there is a container farm in Charlestown that's doing a lot of herbs and microgreens, so. Going to Council Zambuto's zoning subcommittee.
Calendar item number 18, motion presented by Council Rotundo that the city of Revere look into the feasibility of creating microunit zoning for 55 and older persons and disabled veterans.
Council Rotundo.
Thank you. Again, this is the type of zoning that actually, Council McKenna, those people that are down at Lee's Trailer Park would fit into that possibility, and this is the type of zoning that works. In fact, this is the type of zoning that someone like Jamie Russo, who's doing that over on Yeman Street, would excel at. And that's just my thought. This is something that I agree with, it doesn't require parking, because most people who fit within the schism don't own car, for that matter, they generally use public transportation and/or they Uber everywhere, so, I mean, that's, out in Seattle, it's in New York City, I can go through the list of them, and every area that has this type of zoning don't have problems with parking. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Council Powers.
I think it's an excellent motion. You know, my colleague mentioned Jamie Russo, and that's something that he has already done down on North Shore Road and the Bay Road area. Those units are exactly what my colleague is talking about, they're for people that probably don't have a car, that have been displaced through, you know, lack of employment, the economy, whatever it might be, maybe they lost their home or something like that. To me, that's the perfect thing, and what Jamie did down there, taking that old building that was originally built, I believe, as a supermarket, Salmon Dave's Market, and then it turned into the Ugly Sneaker, or the Yellow Sneaker, or something like that, and now it's, and the interesting thing is, if you go by there, he has a lot of parking down there on the side of the building, but it's hardly ever used, because most of those people that are living there, they're taking a T, which is probably a half a mile away, 10-minute walk, 15-minute walk. So I think it's an excellent idea, and I want to compliment my colleague on putting that motion in. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. This is also going to go to Council Zambuto's zoning subcommittee. All in favor? All opposed?
Calendar item number 19, motion presented by Council Rotundo that the city of Revere look into the feasibility of installing a camera and telephone in every playground and park within the city limits, similar to the safety cameras and telephones on college campuses. Furthermore, that the city of Revere hire staff or fulfill this need with trained volunteers to monitor cameras to aid dispatch.
Council Rotundo.
Thank you. I have spoken to the chief via text, and he says that he's working on this, so what I would like to do is put this in committee, and hopefully work with the chief and move forward something of this nature. I think it's something that would be, you know, very beneficial for our children, more importantly, for any person. So, that said, if we could place it in committee, thank you.
We'll place this in our Public Safety Subcommittee.
Calendar item number 20, motion presented by Council Morabito that the mayor direct the superintendent of Public Works to establish an asphalt tag program, such as the system in place that the city of Boston currently utilizes.
Council Morabito.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, a lot of us up here, we get calls from constituents about potholes, sidewalks being torn up. What this motion does is, a lot of times, a company will come into our city and patch up a sidewalk or a street that they're doing utility work on, or some other kind of work. And what happens is, three months down the road, or a year down the road, the street needs repair. What this program does, it embeds a chip, okay? So basically, the chip, on this picture of polka chip, the chip gives basic information, for instance, the year it was paved, or the date, the outer ring will have a company's number. So, the way other cities like Boston and Cambridge, they utilize it, for instance, if a constituent sees a street in disarray or like torn up, they can call 311. 311 person can say, hey, is there a chip on the street? What color is it? And by the color of the chip and the information on the chip, it cuts the resources that the city uses, rather than going into paperwork, seeing who was working on that street, who tore it up, who's responsible for repairing it, and is there a warranty on that street? So what this color-coded embedded chip that the company would put in, use at the site, it would actually help the city and help identify issues, and actually help repair the prob- the problem in a quicker manner.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel Powers.
Thank you, Mr. President. I agree with that motion. I think it's a good motion. I think there's another part or two that, you know, we have drain layers coming up here periodically, looking for licenses to, you know, be approved, there's drain layers. I think that when a trench is opened in this city, I think the DPW needs someone to go out there, whether it's a retiree that's familiar with construction, and pay that person on a per diem. I don't know, and I don't know what the amount would be, $100, $200, to ensure that that trench is properly backfilled with the right material and also compacted properly. And that's part of the problem that's going on in the city. People are coming in, they're throwing the old material back in, they're not compacting it, they're, you know, it's just not working. And that's why you see so many trenches that are sinking three or four inches and causing problems in the city. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Counsel Rotundo.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think this is a great idea. I believe Counsel Morabito's talking about the RFID system, where basically they get that information. And that said, I think if we're going to do this, we probably need to speak to the head of Public Works, and start really getting them to doing this. It's a very simple system, it's a very, it could be cost-effective in the end on the back end of it. I think on the upfront cost, it might be a little high, but that's something that the mayor would be able to negotiate. But I'm for this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Point of information, so as far, as, thank you, Mr. President. As far as the chips, so when a company pulls a permit, or they would purchase the chips.
Counsel Visconti.
This is a great motion. At the end of the day, it holds the contractor accountable, and it makes it easier for us to identify who did the work, rather than chasing it on the back end. It's a great motion, and I look forward to seeing that in the subcommittee.
Thank you, Counsel. So we'll refer that to, actually, all in favor? Oh, we're referring to Public Works Subcommittee? I think we can approve this tonight. You wanna get some details? Counsel Novoseltsky? Public Safety Subcommittee? I'm sorry, Public Works Subcommittee.
Calendar item number 21, motion presented by Counsel Keefe that the city council award a certificate of commendation to Revere Karate Academy in recognition of being in business for 40 years.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. May I speak from the chair? I'll save, and I think the council will probably reserve their comments for the night of this award, but I know Anthony Calviander is in the attendance tonight, so thank you for being here. But we're talking about a lot of businesses that are representing our city tonight, and I could just tell you, Revere Karate, that has been a service to the residents of Revere for 40 years, has represented us very well. So thank you. I look forward to presenting you with this award on meetings to come. Thank you. All in favor?
Calendar item number 23, motion presented by Counsel Sorino that the mayor request Mastaut to install a crosswalk at the traffic light at 540 Squire Road at the entrance to Stop and Shop. Counsel Zambuto is recorded as recused from this motion.
Counsel Sorino.
Thank you, Mr. President. So basically, right now, if you wanted to get from, say, Washington Ave or West Revere to go catch a movie at the movie theater, or go get a pizza at Easy Pie, there's no crosswalk. More importantly, for people who are taking the bus, there's no crosswalk. There's a bus stop across the street from Stop and Shop, but there's no, there's no crosswalk. So people can't get across Squire Road safely. So I think if Mastaut could look at the feasibility, and, you know, forget the feasibility, they just need to put a crosswalk there. So thank you.
Great motion. All in favor? Opposed? Oh. Ms. Gandolfo, welcome back.
Mary Gandolfo, Revere resident. I would like to support that, and I hope you all will. It's a dangerous way to cross, three, four lanes on each side of the highway, and buses coming from Boston and going into Boston. There's at least three or four bus, different buses that service that area, and people crossing over to go to theater, many times kids. So we do need a crosswalk. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All in favor? Opposed? In favor?
Calendar item number 24, motion presented by Counselors Visconti and McKenna that the mayor request the traffic commission to install a stop sign on Sprague Street at the intersection of Winthrop Ave.
Counselor Visconti. I think Counsel McKenna spoke enough for tonight, so we're gonna let you speak.
This just so happens to be right next door to my office, and I've been able to witness cars coming down Sprague Street and just flying down, merging right onto Winthrop Ave. It's an accident waiting to happen. I think a stop sign right at the corner there would serve its purpose, so. That's it.
Thank you. Counsel McKenna.
Thank you, Counsel Visconti, for putting me on this motion, because it is my ward, but thank you very much, I appreciate it.
All in favor? Opposed? So moved.
Calendar item number 25, motion presented by Counselors Keefe and Guanasso that the mayor request the state delegation to review and suggest countermeasures to reduce the number of incidents in which vehicles drive through the center of Brown Circle at Route 107.
Counsel Guanasso.
I think it's a great motion, Mr. President. I'm wondering how they're gonna prevent it. The only thing that I, it's unfortunate that they made it so beautiful that you don't want to touch it, but I think something that has to be done is similar to what's happened at Bell Circle. You have to have the drive-through, and that's the only solution to that problem. It'll be with this forever. Brown Circle is an accident-prone area, and so I think the, has a lot of merit. I hope that they do it. But again, it comes at a cost of losing a little beautification that's in our area that we finally made it so nice. So thank you for putting the effort in, and I hope it goes through the council.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel Novoseltsky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, just as an add-on to that, I think that should also be referred to someone that we know at Mastaut. No, not him. Not him. Someone bigger, yeah. But, you know, that's who would come up with a potential solution. So I'd like to add them on to the motion. Thank you.
Okay. Counsel Sorino.
I was just gonna say, I don't know how often speed enforcement happens down there anymore. I know years ago, there used to be police officers stationed right by BJ's and getting people coming down the Lynn Marshall Road speeding. So I don't know if, you know, if we could get a little more enforcement, or less sporadic, or whatnot, but that was just an idea.
Stick to Ward 6.
Arthur, your mic is on. All right. I would say, and my suggestion is, obviously, we drive by there. I mean, I think every Sunday morning when I drive by, I see the tire tracks running through the middle of the island. But that would be basically my biggest suggestion, is somewhere around the BJ's area to have some blinking flashing lights that says slow down, rotary ahead, because, you know, it's only a matter of time. We all know that there could be a more serious accident.
Mr. President, Ricky already outdid himself tonight in doing some great motions. I don't know, I don't want him to see him take away the little couple of motions that we had. Well done, well done, Counselor, from Watson.
Good point. So all in favor? Opposed? So moved.
Counsel Zambuto is being recorded as recused from that previous motion. Calendar item number 26, motion presented by Counsel Novoseltsky that the mayor request the city engineer and the city solicitor to proceed with the process to install a drainage utility easement between 26 and 34 Hillside Ave in order to prevent icing on Hillside Avenue.
Counsel Novoseltsky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, over the years, this particular location, the water comes off the hill, and the property is privately owned. And we've tried to reach out to the owner, and he's not responded to my calls or anybody from the Water Department's calls. So at this point, we need an easement to put in some catch basins and a water drainage retention area up near his property. It's not a buildable lot, and the water is draining down there very badly. So we have to start the easement process through the city engineer and legal, so ask the mayor to get that going. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Novoseltsky. All in favor? Opposed? So moved? With that is all our business for tonight. Everyone, we will have next week off. It's President's Day, and also the beginning of school vacation week, so keep an eye out for those kids, and we'll see you on February 24th. Thank you. Have a great night. Oh, thank you.